Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, any public comment on agenda items?
I did want to, just because this is someone returning to us, BJ Ferro has returned to work with us now. He is now working with our preschool students as a paraprofessional and it is the cutest thing. I love it.
Does he? Yeah?
Oh my gosh, I think he's trying to turn them all into wrestlers.
He's helping coach bowling though, too.
Oh yeah?
He's helping coach bowling, too.
Bowling, too?
Doing something at the bowling alley.
He is, and he's still coaching little kids. The wrestling, that's awesome. He's still very involved.
So cool.
And works at the golf. That was just a fun one to see that transition, for sure. Other than that, that's all I have on consensus items.
Okay, any comments or questions or anything else on consensus items or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Michelle. Motion by Tim, seconded by Michelle to approve the consensus items as presented. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approved seven to zero. Next up, we have a program update.
So Mrs. Hutter, our new elementary principal, has really been doing a wonderful job and very lucky to have her, so I'm excited to hear her tell you kind of what's going on at the elementary. Thanks to our state legislator, there's a lot going on at the elementary level, lots of changes, lots of things to get ready for, but they're, they're working on it really hard, so come on, stand at the table.
I don't know if we're going to get the card.
Do you need it? I have it in front of me, yeah, that's fine. Do you need it? I'll give you one.
Can you bring your shoulder? Okay, thank you. All right, so first, this is kind of what I'm going to be going over. Like Tim said, there are a ton of changes that we are making. It's hard, but our staff is ready for it. We have a great staff and they're really hard workers. I know I'm putting some pressure on them, but it's needed right now with all the changes with the state and everything that's going on. But they're, they've really taken it under their wing and are doing a great job with it, so I wanted to share with you guys some things that we are working on. So some of my goals for the year was just to be very intentional with what we are doing because I knew there were going to be a lot of changes. I know how hard that is on a staff. Students are resilient, so I wasn't real worried about them. They'll come along with us. So just getting to know the staff was a big goal of mine, really looking at our data and focusing on our data. We're doing a good job with it, which I'll go over more with that. And then just intentional professional data, making sure that we're doing what we need to do. So we're working on math still, we're continuing to work on reading, and then a focus on writing this year, too, so we're kind of hitting all of it early on this year. So for math, you can see, and this is a funny story, so you can see all these pictures of my spreadsheets that I use, and you know how our phones listen to us now when we're talking. So last night, I pulled up Facebook and there was this T-shirt that said, "There's a spreadsheet for that with an Excel spreadsheet." I was like, oh my gosh, that's exactly what I've been doing. So that kind of sums up like the beginning of the year, I feel like. But we started in the elementary level, we started working on building thinking classrooms, which the middle school and the high school have been working hard on, and we thought we could go right along with them to kind of introduce that early to our students and get them going even before they hit that middle school time. So the teachers have done a great job with that. In the middle, you'll see this is kind of what our NWEA data looks like, and this, we give three times a year, beginning, middle, and end of year, and we broke down, especially in math, where the students scored and how we can do some small groups in the classroom to really reteach some of these skills that they needed. And then the iLearn checkpoints, kind of the same thing, so that's new this year, if you didn't know about that. So we again broke down those scores and just really looking at that data and seeing how can we reteach some of those skills to them. And then in reading, let's see, I have on my spreadsheets again. iLearn item specifications, this was kind of new to our teachers, but I'm really glad I showed it to them. It goes through, if you look at this first box, it's very interesting to see, these are example questions that are asked on iLearn. So this is third grade. If you look at some of these questions, I'll give you a minute just to read through them, just so you can see how many different ways this is asked of our students. And this is just one standard that you're looking at here. So we really went through and we broke this down all the way to kindergarten, talking about how can we start supporting some of this language that we're seeing on iLearn tests? And it was really interesting to show the teachers because our kindergarten, first and second grade teachers have never seen this test. So this was good eye-opening, like how can we start doing this in kindergarten? What kind of vocabulary can we start looking at that's really going to support them in the upper grade levels when they take this test? So this has been great to look at. The middle here is Orton-Gillingham, so this is phonics skills that the teachers are working on, and we broke this down because what we see is that they're really good at teaching the content, but then going back and reteaching for those kids that didn't master was something we needed to work on. So they're working on that for Orton-Gillingham, and then kind of the same thing for iRead that we're working on. And then if you go to writing, we had Smekins Education, I don't know if you guys know much about Smekins, I know we've, okay. Smekins Education, it's Christina Smekins, she's well-known for, especially working in Indiana. She has a lot of Indiana teachers that work for her now, and she has come and supported our teachers with writing this year and the curriculum that we're using. So she came at the very beginning of the year and she really went over how to just start the writing mini lessons and made a calendar with them and what that looked like. And then she came back on our first day with the staff and she did the rest of that to really work on the informative persuasive and narrative writing, which we see on the iLearn test as the three ways that they're tested. So she's continuing to work with the staff on that a little bit, just to make sure we're hitting all those different parts of it. And then the last page, of course, we like to have some fun, also, that's a big part of what we do. So we started off the year with a big kickball tournament, we called it, what do we call it? Kickoff to the year, I think. Kim threw the first ball, all the kids got to play. We even had some kindergartners out there trying to play kickball, it was a lot of fun. We did the Fall Fest this year, which we want to make a yearly tradition, that went really well. We had a ton of families there and it was a lot of fun. And then we do just, Mr. Myers is there with his little squirt bottles in the cafeteria. We're just trying to have as much fun as we can too, because that makes the day a little bit easier, so I just wanted to end with some fun things that we are also doing each day. You guys have questions about any of that stuff? I know it's a lot of information, you can see how much I'm throwing at teachers right now.
Thank you. It is a big overload, but they're doing really great things, to be very intentional and the small group, I think reteaching is going to be crucial, and we're going to see big gains from that, but not going to say it's a small effort, but effort within the school day that we have to circle back and be more recursive with those skills that certain kids may have missed or had at the moment and forgot because you moved on, doing that spiral reviewing as we go on, so that's, that's really important. Very proud of you.
You're working hard, that's what they are.
Thank you. You're welcome.
No old business, so for new business, we have approval of the 25-26 school calendar.
I didn't really receive any more feedback from anyone since our last meeting, so unless there's something that I haven't heard yet, I am asking for approval of the calendar number 25-26.
Okay. Any questions or comments or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Jill, to approve the 25-26 school calendar. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approved seven to zero. Next item is approval of the year-end budget transfers.
So this is an annual motion that I ask for your approval, so as I've explained before, the State Board of Accounts don't like there to be any funds in the red at the end of the school year, so this just allows Beth to move around funds that we have so that there's no negative fund balances, so that the auditors like it and State Board of Accounts likes it. Not asking for any more money, not taking money from anything, it's just basically moving funds within the different accounts so that there's not negative balances.
Questions or comments or motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Tim, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eric, motion by Tim, seconded by Eric to approve the year-end budget transfers. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approved seven to zero. Next item is permission to pay year-end outstanding invoices.
And this is kind of the same thing, it's allowing Beth to basically get our year-end reports finished and the books balanced for year-end, so that if there's any outstanding invoices before the January board meeting, she can get those paid so that she can get her books balanced and year-end reports finished.
Questions or comments or motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tim. Motion by Dave, seconded by Tim to approve the payment of the year-end outstanding invoices. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approved seven to zero. Next item is the approval of the teacher appreciation grant stipend.
So that is, the state again funded the teacher appreciation grant, which we call the TAG grant. It's an amount of money that's based on so many dollars per student, and it can only go to those staff who have a certain object code, which usually means they are working directly with students in an instructional capacity during the day. They have to be effective or highly effective, it had to work 120 days the previous year. And so we received that, did our calculations, because the highly effective folks have to get at least 25% more in a differential. And so for that, we have a stipend of about $615 for highly effective, 492 for effective. I would also add that our district has the historic practice of giving the same stipend to any staff who are certified or contracts, professional contracted services that work with kids, not just the ones specified by the state. So in years past, the TAG wouldn't have applied to a guidance counselor, for example, or an instructional coach. It would only have applied to people that had, working with students in a classroom. We feel all these people are supporting teachers and supporting students, and so this is something, again, we do the remainder out of education fund.
Okay. Questions or comments or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Carla, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jill. Motion by Carla, seconded by Jill to approve the teacher appreciation grant stipend. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approved seven to zero. Next up is the approval of the resolution to move curricular revenue to the educational fund.
So this is a new state mandate, Beth is probably the best authority on this, but basically, we used to be able, or used to have to pay any of our curricular bills from the Curricular Fees Fund, because the state is now giving us money for curricular fees or reimbursing us up to a certain amount for curricular fees. They want that in the education fund because it is coming from state monies, and so we now have to move whatever monies we had in that curricular fees fund to the education fund in a new fund line.
Okay.
Going to allow them to track it, I mean, is the key.
Okay. Any questions or comments or motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jill, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Eric, motion by Jill, seconded by Eric to approve the resolution of the curricular revenue to education fund. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approved seven to zero. Next up is permission to open Thrive It Money Market Account at First Pursons Bank for the 2024 GO bond proceeds.
So this was kind of an 11th hour happening this afternoon. We did receive our wire for our GO bond as we finished it last month, and so we were, we were getting to the point of putting those funds in a bank account, and I think this is actually a situation where the, the person that we're working with at that bank called and said, "Hey, before we do this, I can get you some really good interest rates on some of these, on this account in a money market or whatever," and we're like, well, yeah, that makes sense because we're not going to be able to use some of this money for a couple months, so we might as well make money on it. And so that's what we need your approval, is to put it in that account.
I just have a quick question. It's thriving, that's for sure, it's not thrive, not supposed to be thriving, it's supposed to be thriving. Okay, perfect, I just wanted to, yeah, yeah, because I like, it says thriving, so just want to make sure.
That's two different colors.
It doesn't really sound like a typical money, banking.
Yeah, yeah.
We can, there's no, we don't have to go through any kind of special process in order to do that.
Not for this.
Okay.
We're required to spend all the interest that we make on the bond, the project.
Project, what kind of interest?
And so it'll be easier if we can have a separate fund or a separate bank account for the 2024 projects versus the 2023, that's another money market fund, and that one is like 1.7% interest, so this is 4.13.
Wow.
That's excellent.
But that's just permission to open it.
Excellent, excellent. I'll make a motion to approve that.
All right, any other discussion or comments? Okay. Motion by Eric, seconded by Michelle, to grant permission to open the Thriving Money Market Account at First Pursons Bank for the 2024 GO bond proceeds. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approved seven to zero. And next, we have the superintendent's report.
So it's been a busy fall and early winter here, and we are already, just I can't believe we're a couple weeks out of Christmas and winter break. Recap of some events, we did have our first grandparents breakfast at the high school, that was extremely well attended, I think we had 130 grandparents there, and they had a good time. I think it was really sweet, honestly, to see some of those teenagers with their grandmas and grandpas, and some of those grandmas and grandpas were just, you could tell they were thrilled to be there and called out, called into action finally again, and so I think that was a, something, something definitely we'll, we'll do again. The band concert is still coming up, December 13th. We did have our Clue Dinner Theater, which was a big success and very fun and something new and different. I think the folks who attended that had, had a good time. Third, fourth grade music concert, Jackie Sanderson always does a wonderful job with those kids, and it's just amazing what she can get out of them, especially as a larger group, as she's working with the whole, the whole enrollment and see a lot of their parents there, and that's just always a fun Christmas thing to do. I'm probably forgetting an event that I'm in.
So what does the BOP part mean?
The what?
It says BOP, Chris, or the band on the marquee, what does BO, what does that mean?
BOP, the BOP? Don't know that it stands for anything.
Oh.
Style.
Just, oh, okay, got it.
It's probably just more like jazzy.
Okay.
Of the.
Band of.
That's what I was like.
Yeah. Of all the things we have acronyms for, I don't think that's one. But hey, I like that idea. I'll give it to Rachel and say, come up with something.
What am I missing? Nothing, okay, good.
Big outstanding performance.
There we go, there we go.
And Rachel is doing great things with the band, too, and really trying to do a lot of things to generate interest and do some fun stuff with them. Of course, here we are, winding up first semester, December 20th is our last student day, believe it or not, and that means those last couple days will be finals at the high school. I did want to give, let's see, a couple things that I'm excited about with some community partnerships. We haven't really rolled, ruled it out yet, but I have worked with the hospital on a couple things, and they have been extremely supportive of some things that we're, needed some help on, and some things they're going to help us out with. So they just started the Adams Health Community Pharmacy, I don't know if you've seen that down by where their new urgent care is. They are starting a pharmacy delivery, and they are, started it, I think, with Thunderbird, and now they're going to be working with us, and basically, it goes to the employees, but they, once or twice a week, come here, they man a station, and it's going to be kind of right into contract time, so that staff who want to go through their pharmacy can come and get their deliveries from, of their pharmaceuticals, working with the pharmacy aide or tech, or the pharmacist, and really nothing to do with us, but it's a great service for staff, especially, I think, when you are busy, or you have young kids, or you're running here and there, and they can be able to have some of those deliveries, so excited about that. And then the hospital is also, we're, we're working on it still, we have one of our speech-language pathologists that'll be going on, on medical leave here coming up in February, and so we've been trying, Renee and her team have been trying to find a replacement. There's not that many speech folks out there, so if anyone wants job security, that's a great thing to go into. But they are going to work with us with their therapy department to help kind of bridge that gap for us in the period of time we have a need, we're still working out the details, but that is something, again, the hospital, and I actually gave them another call on something Renee asked me to give them a call about, because we're seeing more kids, for some reason, not passing their hearing screenings, and it's really impacting their ability to kind of make good progress with some of their classwork, and so what can we do to help our families figure out next steps and where to go? And they're really going to be helpful with that, too, and bring some of their equipment onsite with parent permission to make sure, okay, is this a fluid in the ear problem? Is this really a hearing problem? And then what do you need to do next to try to figure that out? So they've been really helpful with us the last few months, so we're very appreciative of them and the partnership they've been reaching out to have with us. The multipurpose room project is on track, in fact, we're basically down to a punch list. It looks awesome in there, if you do have a chance to stop in. All flooring and the paint walls done, again, we're just down to punch list items, it's very bright, definitely think an opportunity to be a great community space, too, for folks who need a semi-large gathering space, and the fact that it has kitchen, things there if you're wanting to do a dinner or a meal or something like that, I think it could be a, a great opportunity, and of course, for our kids as well. So we should be seeing kids using that room, we hope, when we come back from winter break in January, and everything stayed on track, we think. Let's see, of course, wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, believe it or not. And I did want to take a few minutes just to thank our board members who are leading us, so start with probably the most veteran, Mr. Eller Dean. So do you want to share with us how many years?
Well.
Or do you not want to share?
I'm looking at this and it's telling me 14 and a half years, so.
And how much has education changed?
Oh, I tell you what, it's, it's been, it's just been such a, such a wonderful ride. It's, it's really sort of interesting that the gentleman who talked me into joining the board is now going to be occupying the seat that I occupy.
That's irony.
And I thank him for that, by the way. You know, it was really interesting, Wiley and I were meeting in his office, and we were just talking, I think it was probably business stuff, I think I was trying to, you know, get him to hire my firm or something, and he said, "Why don't you think about running for board?" And so I had to go in front of the city council, because at the time, it was an appointed position. And, you know, there was me, and I think there was two others or something like that, I mean, it was, at least there was one other, and luckily, or unluckily for you all, they, they picked me.
Were you wearing that suit?
And I was not. I was going to, but then Suzie told me, "That's probably not a good call." Are you saying it looks like it's that old?
No, I'm saying that had to be the reason.
Yeah, it was a suit, it was a suit, so, but it's, it's been, it's been a wonderful ride. I mean, you know, every one of you brings so much to this board. I mean, you know, if it's medical issues, you know, Michelle and Stacy, you know, we look to you every time, and, you know, or if it's, you know, business issues, or educational issues, or healthcare issues, or, or, you know, faith-based, or just, you know, what's best for the students, every one of you brings something to the table, and, and that probably was one of the most enjoyable parts of being on this board, is that we had experts in all different areas, you know, and every one of you just brought such a, a passion, you know, to that, to what you do, and, and for that, I thank you, and just, you know, if there's something I'm going to miss, it's going to be sitting up on that stage, you know, at the end of the year. And, you know, people ask me, "Why do you do it?" And I say, "It's because of that." You know, to be able to stand up there and, you know, see the future of our, of our, of our community, of our world, you know, and, and going to that next step, and, and knowing, albeit very small, that you had just a little bit to do with that, which is pretty cool. So.
Not very many businesses where you get to see the start.
No, yeah, so, and we've done so many great things, you know, in the last, you know, 14 and a half years, and so, so I just, I just want to thank you all for allowing me to play, allowing me to, you know, say stupid things occasionally, and, and not chasing me down, allowing me to wear stupid outfits occasionally, and allowing me to play down at Indianapolis for a while, thank you all for that, and to serve on Redevelopment Commission, whoever has that honor, you know, please, you know, enjoy it, that, that was really an enjoyable part of what I got to do as well, so.
Certainly, those are two of the things I wanted to make sure to know, that how much I've appreciated and the board's appreciated, your advocacy. Without ISBA and professional organizations and education like that, and you've been extremely involved in it, especially the last several years with the legislative tenor going on, just thank you so much for your willingness to advocate and lobby and be aware and educate folks up here in our corner of Indiana on what really needs to be done to support all education, public education in particular, as well as the Economic Development Council. I can tell you Belmont schools, Belmont High School in particular, has definitely prospered because of our Economic Development Council, and I think your understanding of what's going on in our school and our needs and advocating for, we have benefited far more than others, other schools in our area, because I think you have a working knowledge of our schools and you're there to advocate and, and working with Katie, find out what our needs are, it's really benefited and helped our, our programs grow and be able to stay fresh and relevant, so appreciate all that. Thank you very much for all your, for your years.
My pleasure, and one last person, of course, that I have to thank, or I'll walk up, no, I won't walk. No, she's put up with me for a long time, and 14 and a half of those years, you know, in this role, and so.
Thank you, Susan. And then Carla, how many years have you been at it?
Nine.
Nine years, wow.
Yeah, it was, it was fun, it was good time, you know, when I applied, I said I wanted to be part of the team, I thought you guys had been doing a lot of good, and I wanted to be part of that to keep North Adams prospering, and I feel like it definitely has, you know, I just, I think it's, it's the best school system, and we just need to keep breaking.
Yes, you're right.
You know, and that's, you know, that's the main thing, I just think we are so ahead of the game, and we just need to keep making sure everybody knows that.
I appreciate your kind of being my, in a lot of areas, my pulse on the community and kind of thinking, helping us see perspectives from different audiences in our community, I think with your business, and you see and talk and hear from so many people, which that's the, the board member's role, is to be that representative of the community.
That was one of the reasons why I think I was on the board, I think they knew I talked to a lot of people.
You do.
And I just like, if I didn't know, I tried to, "Hey, Kim."
Well, hey.
Just give me your heads up here.
Heads up were great, but also being reflective as a board member and being willing to say, "Well, let me talk to you about this," or "This is who you need to go talk to," or "There's maybe a little more, let me offer this part of the situation to you, because it might not be exactly what you were thinking," type of thing. So those are all great, great traits of a great board member, and I appreciate, again, and just being willing to come in and talk things through, even when, you know, we're not always going to always agree, and, but that's okay, because that's how you grow, make all those things work. So thank you for your service, and I appreciate you.
Thank you for letting me do.
And still call in.
I'm gonna scream cheer on stage.
No, come on. No, Michelle, don't laugh. Stop it.
She's like, "Don't you screw up yourself." Remember, why did you fall off?
No, that was always my big concern.
The whole conversation, all the way up the aisle.
One year, I almost knocked all the diplomas off.
They're all memories.
Not always the best, but okay.
Well, Eric?
Well, I'm not sure if you've noticed this or not, but I'm not quite as verbose as, as Tim is, so this will be short, but I, I wanted to take an opportunity to thank my fellow board members for having faith in me and bringing me into this role four years ago, and although it's a little bit...
And although it's a little bit sad to leave, it's, I've got a lot of hope. Because when you guys brought me on here, it was because we didn't have anybody in the community that wanted to take this role. So I was, I was really glad to serve with each and every one of you. It's been fun.
Well, I appreciate.
But like I said, it gives me hope. We've got people that are interested. And that's great.
And that's a great thing. And I appreciate your intentionality. You are always very reflective of anything I sent to you and gave me good feedback. I appreciate your perspective from higher ed. That has been a tremendous service for us to be able to kind of have that. See that connection between what's happening at all levels, but especially at the high school and then how it's translating. And again, just being reflective, ear to the ground and just being very intentional and thorough. That's always appreciated. So thank you very much for your services.
You're very welcome.
I think that concludes my superintendent's report.
Any other matters to come before the board? Board member public comment last time? Tim, you got anything?
There's a lot cooking down.
It will be a, a very interesting session.
Oh, my goodness.
I, um, yeah, because I, it was funny. I was telling Susan way over here, I did get a notification that there was an ISBA board meeting on Friday. But I wasn't part of it. So, um, so yeah, as far as state, state stuff, no, nothing. But just keep on top of it. Listen to whoever your legislative liaison is, you know, read the things that you get from the ISBA because they do, they do a great job of, of covering what's going on down there. And so, you know, stay active as much as possible. And, and I'll try not to be too verbose, you know, about. I'm going to write that word down. I don't, I don't use that word very often. So, but no, nothing, nothing else.
Well, I want to say thank you to all three of you. It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve with all three of you. I'm going to miss my seat, Nate. But just really thank you all. All right. Well, that's it. Well, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.